Can we do the definition?
Thank you.
Mics on, please.
It has been renumbered, it's now K rather than L. But its cultivation means any activity involving the planting, growing, harvesting, drying, curing, grading, or trimming of medical cannabis.
Thank you.
That help?
I don't think that purchasing soil can be fairly said to be involving the planting. Cultivation starts with planting. And I don't think, as I said earlier, that purchasing soil from off the property and bringing onto the property constitutes earth moving within the meaning of the ordinance. And so I don't see any evidence of satisfaction of either the grading or earth moving or the cultivation prior to May 10th. And on the seller's permit, council spoke of the discretion that's reposed in the planning director to allow for the later submission. And the planning director seems to be of the view that knowing what's known now, that that would not be included is a denial, so I think I'm content to accept that.
Okay.
I agree with most of it. I agree that-
I feel sorry for her.
I think that she was misled by somebody else. But in reality, she signed that application, she turned that application in. The seller's permit, can we take it out? Just remove it from the altogether? I agree she did have it, she did turn it in. But the rest, I would say I would deny it on basis that the application is incorrect.
Okay.
Might I suggestively just remove the seller's permit?
I think that that's what-
Certainly, yes. I would recommend that.
Commissioner Sis just recommended. And I'd like to hear from Commissioner Bakary.
I agree that seller's notice should be drawn. I think Peter actually effectively said that. And I agree that the rest of the resolution is fine. I'm not sure about the cultivation. I do think buying dirt, especially marijuana pots, is exactly planting or major part of planting, but whatever, I still agree that they violated the ordinance. Pretty obvious.
Okay, so we've pretty much polled everybody and it appears that we are going to delete item number two from the resolution. Everything else would stand. If you could-
I would actually suggest, since the evidence that we've recommended in the resolution for the first finding, that they did not provide evidence, that we might want to add a statement that, because we're basically referring back to the pictures that we've also now accepted as not being fully representative of the site. But we might want to add something that the cultivation area expanded after the May 10th deadline. Because I think that's sort of the key issue here that you've all sort of landed on, that, you know, even though there might have been some cultivation activity occurring on the site, it certainly wasn't commensurate with what ended up being out there in August and that exceeded the provisions of the code.
I'm good with that. And then I have a second question when you just brought that up. On item number two, should we strike it or should we give a reason that we overturned that portion to keep it on the record?
I think you can just strike it.
Okay.
Your reasons for denying the appeal are the two that are remaining, the false and misleading.
Okay.
So let me just get my head together for a moment and think of it right down.
Okay, we're striking number two. And keeping it down.
Okay, on the resolution, in paragraph one, the citation to the ordinance is 17.95.165 Shouldn't that just be A-B?
I think that's probably more appropriate.
And then, I'm not seeing any evidence of grading or earth moving prior to May 10th.
Yeah, I think that should be added.
So I would change, yes, I would change the last sentence to read aerial imagery taken May 31, 2016 does not show any evidence of cannabis in pots, fencing, other cultivation activity, or grading or earth moving on the parcel.
I'm sorry, Kelly, or grading or-
Earth moving.
Or earth moving.
Earth moving.
One change I would suggest on number one is to put the word acceptable before evidence. So because acceptable evidence of cultivation and grading was not provided. Again, we have pictures to make where to say.
And what do you want to add at the end? Commensurate with 22,000 square feet of cultivation.
Yep. In the evidence, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Paul, would you like to read the resolution? Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Staff recommends that the planning commissioner adopt the resolution 2017-016 as amended, denying appeal 2016-562, thereby upholding the planning director's determination to deny application 2016-562.
Thank you.
So moved.
As amended. I, the second, as amended.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five oh.
This action is final unless appealed to the board supervisor through the 15 calendar days.
Okay. Next order of business. We have, we are looking at project number 2015070, the zoning ordinance amendment adding post-disaster recovery provisions. Peter, are you going to speak to that today?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is an ordinance amendment that actually the planning commission heard about a year and a half ago. And this would make permanent the urgency ordinance that was adopted by the board shortly after the Butte fire that created provisions for recovery and temporary housing for people that lost their homes in disaster. It was specifically related to the Butte fire, but it's crafted to address any future disasters as well. This went to the planning commission because of a variety of reasons, we never took it to the board. After further discussion, we felt that it would be appropriate to bring it back to the commission since we now have a new commission, new board. Time lapse has occurred between the first reading, which would be planning commission, and the, you know, final adoption, second reading with the board of supervisors. So we decided to bring it back to you. One of the issues that has come up since, we realized in the crafting of the code that the intent is clearly to provide relief for those who lost their home, but the actual language of the code is a little more open-ended. And we've had several temporary mobile homes permits issued to new purchasers of property. And that was clearly not the intent. So there is some optional language that is provided in the staff report that you may want to consider, and at this point, I think I'd recommend that it be added. And as was pointed out to me by Commissioner Ladish, there was a typographical error or drafting error. The word "on" should be inserted in there. So on a parcel, "on which a residence sustained damage such that the residence was destroyed or was rendered uninhabitable." The other question that's been raised is the SEQA applicability to this. There are a variety of different exemptions in SEQA that allow for the county to not have to prepare an environmental document. And initially, we had found that this qualified under an urgency exemption or emergency project exemption. And there's been some discussion, question about whether or not the SEQA exemption 15269C actually applies. I believe it does. And the issue here really is, you have, you can do an emergency exemption for something you need to do right now. You know, we've got a fire, we've lost home, we need to do something right now. But in this case, we're actually looking prospectively as to future emergencies as well. And the language says, "Specific actions necessary to prevent or mitigate an emergency. This does not include long-term projects undertaken for the purpose of preventing or mitigating a situation that has a low probability of occurrence in the short term." I think that the commission can make a finding that we have more than a low probability of a disaster occurring in the short term. We already have two more disaster declarations in this county between the time that this was written and today. And, you know, God help us, but we probably will have more. There'll be more wildfires, potential for more flooding, severe storm damage, you name it, the county is susceptible to it. I think that this is an appropriate exemption to apply, and I think that we can support it based on what we know to be a reality in the county of future disasters.
That was discussed the last time as well, because the governor's orders waived that SEQA.
Well, and then that's specific to that-
That incident.
That incident.
Correct.
But we're, I mean, it's likely that some other disaster is going to hit the county. We, you know, we hope it won't be anything like the Butte fire. We've, actually, we hope it never happens again, but we, I don't think we can count on that. So I think that we are well within the purview of SEQA, the provisions of SEQA, to utilize this exemption for this ordinance.
Do you think we should have at least state some existing threat as an example, such as the burn, the beetle killed trees and such that we have, you know, there's more than a low probability of occurrence in the short term that we could have a major fire?
I don't, I don't want to list anything because I never know what disaster is going to hit us next. We've gone through a fire, we've gone through tree mortality, we've gone through flooding and bridges being wiped out and roads. Next, it could probably be an earthquake. So if we list specific items and an emergency or crisis hits us and it's not on the list, we're back to square one.
No, no, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't make myself clear. I think you might say such as, not, not, not that it would only apply under this circumstance. It's just that if there were to be some sort of a challenge that, oh, we should have gone through the SEQA stuff, why we should perhaps have an example of the sort of truly existing risk that we currently see.
But there's so many examples of so many disasters. Where do you stop? I mean, you could list all kinds of stuff.
Well, I'd say, I'd just say some such as is my, I thought.
I think that's probably a good idea, and we could just add it to the evidence under finding number one, about two-thirds of the way down. This ordinance mitigates the emergency caused by the Butte fire and future disasters such as wildfire, flooding, and storm, or storm damage.
Yep.
It doesn't, it's not all-inclusive, it doesn't mean only those, it just means those are potential future disasters.
I kind of don't want to do that. I, I just, I mean, we've been hit with so many things that were unexpected. I don't even know that a such as is important to be in there. And when you're worried about the SEQA portion of it, these are immediate mitigation measures. They are not long-term. And in the long term, that's still going to apply.
Well, the long-term project that the SEQA guidelines are talking about is, I think, the ordinance itself.
Well, I will tell you-
It's, it's an ordinance that will remain in effect until it's repealed. The short-term things that the board of supervisors might do if there is an emergency isn't the, isn't the-
I can give you a perfect example of what we're dealing with right now. We have a complete bridge washout over a, it's not a seasonal, it's a year-round creek running. And we need a temporary bridge there because it has, it's got some health and safety issues. So that temporary bridge is probably going to be there from three to eight years because it requires NEPA, SEQA. I don't want to cause anything in this document that could put limitations in front of us on a temporary mitigation. I, I mean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, but I feel like when we've got a mitigation such as something like this that we're dealing with on that bridge, I don't want to throw something in this document that could cause further problems down the road. I mean, obviously, the long-term repair has to go through everything, and that's why it's going to take so many years to repair. That I get. I mean, we do have to do a permanent fix, but right now, we need something temporary.
I understand your concern. I'm just concerned that any county could say, huh, well, anything can happen, so we don't have to comply with SEQA here, we're under the exemption.
No, this is only when there's an emergency declaration, though.
It's, it's an emergency declared by the board of supervisors, yes. But I mean, right now, we're dealing with an ordinance that, in my opinion, is a long-term project. So it comes within this second sentence of this guideline. And any county could say, we could, we could have a crisis at any time and therefore this, we don't have to comply with SEQA. I just thought that having a such as in there would be good to show, to show this wasn't cookie cutter, this was, in Calaveras County, we have problems that can develop into disasters such as this one.
Well, it says right here under A, disaster means a wildfire, flood, earthquake, or other natural or human-caused event that damages or destroys dwellings or other property and displaces people which forms the basis for a declared local state of emergency. It's pretty darn clear what an emergency declaration is. It's not because one of our supervisors broke a fingernail. I mean, this is like crisis.
It's whether we're complying with the state statute, that's all.
We have to.
Yes.
And even the state waives those SEQA requirements.
Yes, when there is an emergency. But the problem is, the way I see it, is that we are, we are, I mean, I think it's a great idea. I think the stat, this ordinance that's being suggested is a great idea, and the amendment that you're suggesting is a very good idea. I just want to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's as far as the SEQA guidelines go, so that it isn't subject to a challenge that we have a defense to.
But it, it declares what emergencies are and how the parameters of it exist.
In the ordinance.
Well, I don't see how adding examples, such as examples, will lessen any risk of a non-compliance with SEQA anyway. And I'm, since I don't think it will really help, and I don't really think there's that big an issue to begin with, I would prefer to leave it out.
Is this common sense?
I would suggest, I do have a question on 19.93.020, Declaration of the Emergency, where it refers to a local emergency has been declared by the board. And maybe this isn't necessary at all, but what about an emergency declared by the governor? Does the board automatically follow suit? Do we want this ordinance to apply in the unlikely event the governor declares one and our board doesn't?
I believe that for, to take advantage of a declared state of emergency, the board has to declare it. So, you know, and I think, I think the language is appropriate. The board should declare it. It's a county emergency, the county has to declare it. I think to go to either require the state to do it or to eliminate the board from doing it, I think maybe broadens the scope too much. I think that by requiring the board to declare it focuses on Calaveras County. And also, I, I believe, although I'm not sure, in order for us to benefit from a declaration of disaster, that we, that the board has to do it. That's why we continue to extend that, the declaration of emergency for all of the current emergencies that we have, that every month or so, it has to be extended again. That we're, yes, we're still under an emergency situation here.
That answers that. My only other issue on the ordinance was 17.93.040B1, where it says, "Landowner shall provide proof of ownership and proof that a permitted residence was destroyed as a result of disaster." But I think it's, the idea was if it was destroyed or rendered uninhabitable would qualify. And so I think we should add the phrase after the word destroyed or rendered uninhabitable, if I'm understanding what we're doing here correctly.
Wasn't that something we ran into an issue with, Peter, when he's reading on B1? I didn't catch this earlier. We had a lot of homes that were built pre-'40s, that there is no records at the county on those homes? Wasn't that language an issue for those that their homes burned down and they couldn't get counted into the FEMA records?
There, there was some challenge with that. I, I think that what this is saying, though, is that, not that you have to prove that there was a, you know, that the residence was permitted, but proof that the residence was destroyed or rendered uninhabitable. That we had to have something there to show that actually was a house on, on the property beforehand. Whether it's a photograph, whether it was a building permit, assessment record, something that would demonstrate, oh, yeah, there was a home and clearly it was destroyed. We're, we're not going to allow someone to put a temporary trailer on a home that never had a, never had a, on a property that never had a home on it. That's not the intent of this. And I think maybe adding that language is a good idea.
We ran into a whole lot of foundations out there that were homes that burned, that were old, old family homes, but they didn't have records at the county for them, remember? You were in the field, I think you remember.
Yeah.
Well, my suggestion was just to make B1 consistent with the change to 040 that you've suggested in the staff report. That's all it does.
Oh, I see what you're wanting added. That's good. Good job. That's why we keep you. But we still have the issue of Commissioner Ladish and I in disagreement over here, so we need to resolve that with a poll of the-
As far as that goes, I mean, in the, if the sense of the commission is that they don't want any such as language in there.
The only sense was you and I. We need to get opinions from the others in case they disagree with me and like you.
I'm sorry, send the table with three's, with Kelly.
Oh, okay.
So that's three to two.
Okay.
Sounds more like-
I just wanted to be there, you know?
That's fine, given, no, no.
No such as.
Given that, and, and, you know, I, I, that's fine. I was just looking for a protective shield here. Then I do think we need to strike the last sentence under the evidence for finding number one. The provisions for emergency housing are temporary and they're not long-term projects, because I think that, that opens us up. That looks as if we're doing this on the basis that the ordinance itself is not a long-term project. And I think that really does put us in a weakened position.
They are temporary and not, and are not long-term projects?
That, the, that is true, but the only reason for that sentence is to show compliance with this guideline that talks about long-term projects. The long-term project that we're confronting, I think, is the ordinance itself, not the temporary building permissions that would be given under the ordinance. So I, I don't think, I, I think having that sentence there, for somebody who wanted to attack this ordinance on a SEQA basis, just provides them with ammunition to show that we didn't understand what the SEQA was requiring. And the whole thing should be thrown out without having, going through the SEQUAs.
I, boy, man, I'm going to have to get more coffee because we're going to be here for a while, you and I. The provisions for emergency housing are temporary and are not long-term projects, I think is critical to be in there. Sometimes you have to have plain language like that for people that think, hey, I was able to put a manufactured home here the last two or three years and I don't have to take it down because it's not a temporary, you, you need to spell it out, temporary, it's not long-term.
I, I was reading it as a justification to show qualification with the SEQA guidelines, and it's, it's, it's an irrelevant statement there for that.
Peter?
I think with regard to this finding, Commissioner Ladish is correct. It's not necessary. I don't know if a similar statement, you know, if it should be moved to a different finding or...
What about in the recitals? Where the provisions for emergency housing are temporary and are not long-term projects?
And I would just say that they are temporary, I wouldn't say they're not long-term projects.
Was it moved to the recitals?
Okay.
Is there a possibility of having it stated that they're temporary without any evidence section for, to support the SEQA amendment?
I think that's a great idea. So another whereas.
How do the other commissioners feel? Want to poll you all? I like hearing from you.
Well-
Come on, wake up.
I'm no SEQA expert.
Neither am I.
And I, I really don't have a view worth expressing on that particular issue.
I think it needs to be there somewhere. It needs to state that it's for the emergency and it's temporary.
I think, well, can I just try to help sort out for you guys? I think some of the issues, there, I see two separate issues here. The use of the word project, I think, is what's being confused in here. There's, this is an ordinance about short-term projects in, in emergencies. Okay, so it's, so the question, I think that, I think what Commissioner Ladish is bringing up is that he doesn't want to refer to the short-term projects as the SEQA project, because the SEQA project is the programmatic issue before us, which is the adoption of the ordinance. So it's confusing because when you adopt an ordinance, that's considered a project under SEQA, and then you have to look for an exemption. Okay? So if this ordinance is the project under SEQA, then there would be no point in referring to the short-term temporary housing projects as if that's the project that we're, that's before us right now. Am I saying that correctly? Am I saying that correctly?
You are, and this is not a project.
And that the.
He's taking the word project. It's scaring him with SEQA. Right.
The ordinance is the project. But here, this sentence is in the evidence as to the fact that the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to 15269, which talks about long-term projects. I think we're, we're just, we're, we're raising a red flag if we have this sentence in the evidence that it complies with 15269 because the emergency housing projects that we're contemplating and in, in the, in the ordinances that the board might pass if there is a disaster is not the project that SEQA is having us look at.
Removing it from the evidence and adding it to a whereas, is that acceptable?
That, I, I would suggest that you not say it's not a long-term project because that's the only relevance of it. But if you want to put it a whereas, it's certainly better than having it in here.
Do you understand what he's saying with the long-term portion of that?
Yes, I do. I would.
We should probably hear from the public.
How about we do that? Colleen, do you have any input for us, since you're the only public member left?
I don't know if I can help you.
We're here way past dinner. I know you've got no energy left.
I might, might as well say something. I, I agree with the confusion, though, because it is a long-term project, the ordinance is a long-term project. Temporary housing is short-term, it's two years, it's limited under, under the wording here, so that's good. But you're right, it's confusing. You're, you know, the ordinance is a long-term project, so to put temporary and long-term in the same sentence is confusing. So whatever you do to sort of figure that out, it sounds good. We support the ordinance. I mean, that's, you know, it's a great idea.
So do I.
And, and the change and the clarification to, you know, having a residence and having to be an owner is absolutely needed, you know.
Right, I agree.
To take care of the problem, so figure out how to word that finding somehow.
Well, good. I, I have a suggestion.
Let's hear it.
So if we move the last sentence up into the recitals and change the last word and are not long-term, permanent improvements rather than projects.
Ooh, that works.
And, and rather than the such as, a phrase that was suggested earlier, after future disasters, we say that are likely to occur in the short term. And that gets specifically to this provision in the.
Yep. That sounds great.
This would be right.
I'm not sure if that's where you word, but the language is great.
That are likely to occur in the short term.
And where, where does, where?
That would go to the same location where you had suggested the such as's.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, great.
Okay, made you happy?
I got a couple others on, on the resolution. In the third whereas clause, the third sentence reads, "The critical need for additional emergency shelter options is heightened by the fact that the winter months are approaching," which I think was probably a carryover from the emergency ordinance and probably is not appropriate for this ordinance.
Where were you in that?
Middle of the paragraph on the third.
The third whereas clause, the sentence in the middle of the paragraph that starts the critical need.
Just for a minute.
And I've got two others before we're done with that. In paragraph two, under the evidence number C, the second sentence says, "This ordinance is intended to provide safe and adequate housing for residents who lost homes due to the Butte Fire." And then it goes on. I think after the phrase Butte Fire, we should add the phrase or other declared emergency.
Agreed.
And then the same change would be in paragraph E after the phrase Butte Fire. And last is a typo in the last evidence section, second sentence, "By its terms, the ordinance only takes FX," plural, should be singular.
That was when you caught last time, and I missed it.
And that's all I have on the resolution.
I wonder if in the very first whereas of the resolution, we say whereas the Butte Fire created a continuing declared, I mean, indicating that it is still in existence, declared state of local state and federal emergency. Then how do we get your amendment into our resolution?
I think that is a part of the action by the commission that you include that language in the proposed ordinance.
So that, that should be like number five? I guess it really should be.
I think that.
New number four, and renumber five.
Yeah.
All right, I'm taking, I'm sorry. Yes, where would you insert that?
I would say, be it therefore resolved, the Planning Commission recommends approval of 2015-070, or amendments as amended.
And then, so the attachment to the resolution would show.
The, the ordinance, I, we will make the changes to the ordinances. You've had a couple other changes to it, you know, adding some of the other language, and you could substitute this language in there. And so the final document going to the board will have all of your changes.
That sounds great.
Any further comments on that? We're all clear on the amended changes?
Crystal.
We're tired, you can tell. Okay. So I guess what I'm looking for is a motion from somebody to accept this resolution as amended. Can I hear you? Speak up into the mic, please.
So if you can read it, or we just got to vote on it.
Do you want to read it?
Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending that the Board of Supervisors take the following action. Find that the proposed, or proposed ordinance, adding chapter 1793, is exempt from SEQA pursuant to section 15269, let's add C of SEQA guidelines, and adopt an ordinance amending chapter 1764 as amended of the Calaveras County Code.
I think adopt an ordinance as amended is probably the better place to put, because it comes after.
Yeah. Adopt an ordinance as amended, yeah. We're all getting a little punchy here.
I, I move that we adopt the resolution as amended.
A second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then we have no study sessions today?
No.
Commissioner reports, or wait, public comment off agenda. You have nothing to say? Commissioner reports?
I just wanted to mention that I think we all were agreeing that it would be a very good thing to have some sort of, get together with Caltrans, et cetera, about the, the safety.
I will work with Caltrans and Public Works to bring something back to you in the not-too-distant future. Don't know exactly when, but sometime soon.
Right, I understand.
That means five years. Okay.
As soon as we're working on it.
Yes, agreed. Planning Director reports.
I just have one thing I wanted to bring up. Last meeting, we talked about having a study session or a discussion of interpretation of the code. And going back, looking at the ordinance, the Planning Commission really doesn't have that authority. That's a board action. So I'm going to be bringing something to the board soon, hopefully, well, I hope to work on it this afternoon, but it might be the following meeting that looks at sort of addition to the, the work program that we discussed a few meetings ago and adding that to my, my list of things that, for the board to, to consider. And sort of broadening the scope of that a little bit, not just looking at the beer and wine, but, but some of the other issues associated with some of the tourist-related activities of the winery industry and some other things. So just wanted to let you know that that won't be on our agenda next meeting. And Mrs. Richell, I don't know if you have a chance to talk to Matt, just let her know, but that will be going to the board. A discussion of that issue will be going to the board. I don't know if they'll be addressing that specific issue, but a potential ordinance amendment might be in the works on that.
All right, well, I think we're all done then. We'll adjourn at 5:24.